Good afternoon. Okay, good evening, everybody. My name is Roslyn Clemens. I am the Director of the Department of Neighborhoods. I would like to welcome you to our public hearing on the substantial amendment to our 2020-24 Consolidated Plan and our 2021-2022 Annual Action Plan to allow the City of Toledo to use the Section 108 Loan Guarantee Program and to submit a generic application to HUD to set up a loan guarantee pool. I'm joined tonight by Monica Brown, who is one of our analysts, Commissioner Benita Bonds, who is our Commissioner of Administrative Services, and Tiffany McNeill, who is our Commissioner of Housing. I will start with a presentation and then we will open it up to questions from the participants. I'm going to share my screen. Can everybody see my screen? Okay. So again, this hearing is for a substantial amendment to amend our five-year consolidated plan, the 2020-2024 version, and to amend our 2021-2022 Annual Action Plan for the use of the Section 108 Loan Guarantee Program in the submittal of a generic application to establish a $37 million Section 108 loan pool. The Consolidated Plan is a document that HUD requires us to put together that describes the city's housing and community development needs over a five-year period and really spells out the priorities and the programming that we are going to do with our federal dollars. The 2021-2022 Annual Action Plan spells out, within the context of that four-year consolidated plan, what we are going to do in a one-year period. In order to add programs to those two plans, we must do a substantial amendment, and that's what we are doing tonight. The Section 108 program provides communities with a source of capital for economic development, housing rehabilitation, public facilities, and public infrastructure projects to increase resilience against natural disaster. The program allows a community to access borrowing authority of up to five times its annual CDBG application. So we get about $7.7 million a year. Sometimes it's a little less, sometimes it's a little more. But our borrowing authority for CDBG, if we were to access the Section 108 loan program, would be about $37 million, and that is what we would like to do and to use that to set up a loan pool for eligible activities. This program is used by cities to undertake public facilities and infrastructure projects and alternatively to be loaned to third-party businesses and developers to undertake projects through a Section 108 loan pool. Section 108 is perhaps one of the most powerful tools that HUD has because it allows us to use that CDBG funding as equity, if you will, or as leverage to upfront that money so that we can invest in projects that we need to do in the near future. So it's a very flexible tool that many cities use and that City of Toledo has not really capitalized on, and we'd like to move forward to begin to use this tool. A specific action in the city's housing strategy that was recently passed by council was that we needed to diversify resources and bring in more resources for housing and community development. Our council unanimously passed the housing strategy, and in that strategy, it specifically called out the need for us to activate the Section 108 program. And that's what we're trying to do with this amendment. The Section 108 program, a Section 108 loan is not a general obligation debt. It leverages limited grant funds. It allows us to access funds immediately versus pay-as-you-go CDBG. It allows us to structure repayments based on specific project requirements, and it really provides long-term fixed-rate financing that is below conventional rates and financing in many cases that would be unable or unattainable because of where some of these projects may be in high-risk areas or underserved areas. So again, it's a powerful and flexible tool that we want to access. We have a link here on this presentation where HUD has compiled Section 108 loan project profiles from 2019 until the present, and we like to, we will post this presentation on our website, and we'd like for the public to go and review some of the Section 108 loan project profiles that HUD has funded over the years. And we're also tonight going to show you a sample of what those projects are. As I said, the financing is favorable, typically more favorable than what folks can or what developers and businesses can access from private institutions. The loan terms are up to 20 years. The permanent financing base rate at this time is approximately 2.5%, and the interim financing rate is about, it's 90-day LIBOR plus 33 basis points. Section 108 projects must meet a national objective. The Section 108 program is part of the CDBG families of programs. Therefore, any project that accesses Section 108 funding must meet a national objective. And there are several ways that a Section 108 project can meet a national objective. It must benefit low- and moderate-income residents via job creation and retention. And these are generally manufacturing projects or distribution facilities, businesses that will then generate jobs from the utilization of the Section 108 financing. Another national objective is that the project must benefit low- and moderate-income residents via housing. Section 8108 allows you to use the funding to rehabilitate housing, and the residents of the housing must be residents that are low- and moderate-income residents. You can also use Section 8 to eliminate slum and blight in an area. And then again, the Section 108 program can be used to benefit a low- and moderate-income area. This is where, let's say you're using Section 108 to build a recreation facility in a low-moderate-income census tract or a low-moderate-income neighborhood. So the projects that are funded with Section 108, again, must meet one of the HUD-defined national objectives. What are the uses of a Section 108 loan pool? What types of projects can be funded with a Section 108 loan? You can finance real property acquisition. You can rehabilitate publicly-owned property like community centers. You can fund relocation. You can fund clearance and demolition. You can prepare a site for a project. You can fund housing rehab. You can fund sidewalks. You can fund bridges. You can fund lighting. You can repair lead lines. You can repair water lines. You can also fund some of the issuance costs with a Section 108 loan. You can fund capitalized interest with a Section 108 loan, and you can fund both debt service reserves and operating reserves with a Section 108 loan. In addition to meeting national objectives, the key federal requirements that all Section 108 projects have to comply with are obtaining an environmental review, Davis Bacon labor standards, the Uniform Relocation Act, fair housing and equal opportunity, and lead-based paint requirements. How does the Section 108 process work? Communities must first submit a generic application to HUD to obtain a commitment for the Section 108 borrowing authority. That's what we're doing now. That's what we're, that is the request that is, we are pursuing. If that is approved by HUD, and in that request, we want to talk about the types of projects we will fund. We want to talk about our application process. We're going to talk about our staffing. We're going to talk about the types of loans that we're going to make. We're going to talk about, are we going to prioritize loans for a specific part of the city, like our neighborhood revitalization areas? We're going to talk about what kind of loan approval process we're going to have. What are the minimum and maximum loans? So that application will then describe to HUD what we are proposing to do with that loan, that borrowing authority, how we will manage it, how we will operate it, how we will staff the program. If HUD approves this and said, "Okay, I like your generic application. I like how you're going to run this program." You can now set up your loan pool and start taking applications, underwriting them, and approving projects for use of this funding. HUD has established very strict underwriting guidelines for all revenue-generated projects, and these guidelines are designed to minimize the risk and maximize the community development impact. These projects, because the Section 108 program essentially is guaranteed by your annual CDBG allocation, HUD wants you to carefully look at the revenue generating assumptions of these projects. We want you to make sure that you're taking prudent risk. Want you to make sure that these projects will pencil out and that they will indeed be able to pay the debt service. So the project or anything that is funded with a Section 108 loan must demonstrate the ability to pay the Section 108 loan from the cash flow and provide additional security. The additional security are liens on the property, personal and corporate guarantees, maybe revenue from your sales. And HUD typically negotiates on a case-by-case basis for income-producing applicants what that alternative source of additional security will have to be in addition to the cash flow. Because again, we don't want to have a situation where a project defaults, and we then would have to pay for that default with our CDBG dollars. For non-income-producing projects like a community center or roads and bridges or infrastructure that the city wants to borrow a Section 108 for, the city must pledge, in addition to pledging CDBG dollars to cover the debt service, the city must also pledge an alternative funding stream in the unlikely event that we ever were to lose our CDBG allocation. For example, let's say the city decided to upgrade all of its community centers or upgrade a community center, and the cost for that was around $10 million. The city would then say, "Okay, for $10 million, we'd carve off $500,000 a year for the next 15 years to pay back this debt. We would carve it off from our CDBG annual allocation." Doing, we must also, when we're doing that for a non-revenue project, even though we're earmarking CDBG dollars to cover the debt, we must also earmark an alternative income stream to guarantee that debt service, like parking revenue, franchise fees, or some other revenue that the city would set aside as a backstop just in case we would ever lose the CDBG and could not cover the CDBG allocation. And that's for a non-income-producing project. We don't have to do this for an income-producing projects because the expectation is that the project would demonstrate that it has the cash flow, and then there would be additional security on the project. I want to point out that the city has, the one time that the city has used a Section 108 was in 2000. We borrowed $24.4 million for an expansion of the Jeep facility. The city, the revenue streams, the revenue came from Jeep itself, and then the backup revenue was, came from a tax increment financing district. That loan has been paid off. It was paid off in, I believe it was 2018. That was a one-project Section 108 application. In this case, we are requesting authority for a loan pool where we would have multiple applications to that loan pool for projects and for community work or public facility works in our targeted neighborhoods. I want to talk a little bit about, give you some examples of how Section 108 is used successfully in other cities. In the city of Cleveland, the city of Cleveland lent $8 million of Section 108 loan guarantee financing to remediate and develop a 10.6-acre industrial residential site into an employee-owned cooperative greenhouse that creates 42 full-time jobs. The greenhouse currently produces 2 million pounds of healthy vegetables and over 200,000 pounds of fresh herbs each year for Cleveland residents. Restoration of the Faragut Hotel in Knoxville, Tennessee. The city of Knoxville used 2.9 million in Section 108 loan funds to help fund the redevelopment of the historic Faragut Hotel building in downtown Knoxville. This was considered the final piece of the redevelopment of downtown in that city. Another example of the use of Section 108 lending is for a small business. This is a small yogurt shop in Austin, Texas after a fire. And in Austin, the city has established a family business loan pool with their Section 8 dollars, and they lent this establishment $150,000 to restore the business that had been destroyed by a fire. And the business was renovated and has created 12 new full-time positions. This is a very large mixed-use project in Los Angeles, California. $44 billion housing, senior housing projects, 105 senior units, a library and some retail in this building. The county used $1.8 million of Section 108 gap financing to make this project happen. It's located in a Willbrook area, sort of a underserved Latino and African-American neighborhood in this county. Another example of housing, High Point, North Carolina. $694,000 of Section 108 loan guarantee financing was used to acquire a site and create 58 units of affordable housing. This is an example of adaptive reuse of an old packing facility in Anaheim, California, where $7 million was used to restore the structure, create a food market with local vendors, and it has indeed been a catalytic project for downtown Anaheim. So the program, the Section 108 loan program, is very powerful in terms of what you can do, how you can invest in your neighborhoods, how can you invest in your community facilities, your public infrastructure. It is a very low-cost financing tool where it's backed by the full faith and credit of the federal government, enabling us to get, again, low-cost financing on the market to do a lot of projects in our city that are needed. Well, how will our, how does the process work? So when we submit the generic application and get the authority to set up this loan pool, we're going to have a rolling application process. We'll tell the community that this program is now available. We'll lay out underwriting guidelines. We will let folks know the types of loans that we want to solicit. We will tell them that the priority neighborhood areas where we would encourage loans for investment. Those loans will come in, and they will be reviewed and underwritten by staff. We will set up a Section 108 loan review committee that will have bankers on it, realtors, business people, and they will sort of, like any sort of bank, they will be the sounding board and the approval for these loans. All Section 108 loans are subject to citizens' participation, so we have to have a public hearing on each loan, like we're doing now for the submittal of the generic application. And then, of course, our council will have the final approval for each one of those loans. After our local approval is done, we will then submit those loans to the HUD field office for approval. If HUD approves the loan, the community signs a promissory note, and a commitment is then issued by HUD to guarantee that note. So let's say we have a loan for half a million dollars. HUD likes the loan. HUD likes how it's underwritten. HUD is, it's comfortable that the risks are prudent. HUD is comfortable that there's enough debt, there's enough revenue to pay back this money. HUD will then say, "Okay, I guarantee this note. I put the full faith and credit of the federal government behind this note." With a guaranteed note, then, those notes are then sold to investors because they're guaranteed by the federal government. They're sold to investors. The money from the investors are then lent to the city, and then in our case with a loan pool, the city will then take those proceeds and lend it to the applicants that we, for which we have approved the loan. This is an example, just to give you a graphic of the flow of this. This is called a Level 1 transaction where the city is borrowing. Let's say the city is borrowing money for a community center project or for an infrastructure project. We apply to HUD. If HUD likes the project, we sign a loan document. We sign a promissory note. That promissory note, if HUD likes it, the note is guaranteed and sold to a lender. The lender then issues the money or advances the city money for this project, and per the payment schedule that is negotiated for the loan, we would then repay the lender the proceeds. So this is an example of a flow for a, what is called a Level 1 transaction, where the borrower is the city, and the uses of the fund is for a city project. This is an example of a Level 2 transaction, and these would be the types of, most of the transactions that we would be doing because we are setting up, step five is our loan pool where we are lending money to third-party businesses or developers. So we approve the third-party business or developer loan. If it's approved, we then submit it to HUD, and it goes through the same flow as a Level 1 transaction. These are, if you look, if you go and look up Section 108 loans that have been done, this program enables CDBG grantees to leverage more than four times their annual CDB allocations to do projects. The use of the program has grown significantly over the years. And again, it's just a powerful tool for doing the work that we need to do. Often, a Section 108 loan is the final piece in the capital stack that will make deals happen. For many of the community facility loans, a Section 108 loan is probably the only piece in the stack. So again, it's a powerful potential tool that the city is not using, that we want to activate to do the work of housing and neighborhood and business development in our underserved neighborhoods. So with that, I'm going to stop and take questions tonight and from anybody that may have any. Monica, do we have anybody in the chat?
No, no one's in the chat. I just allowed Mike and Lisa the opportunity to talk if they would like to.
Okay.
Hi, ladies. Thank you so much.
Hi.
Hi. I'm wondering, how is this similar or different to the LISC loans that we could get? Do you know what I'm talking about? L-I-S-C, LISC.
LISC is a CDFI, and they have a variety of loan programs. This is different. This is not a LISC program. This would be a City of Toledo Section 108 Loan Guarantee Pool for housing and economic development needs.
Okay, I just wondered. I just, I know that they do loans. I just wondered how it was different. But it doesn't matter. It's nice that we have more money coming to the community. That's beautiful. Thank you.
And you could have a project that has maybe some LISC funding, and then maybe there's a gap. There's an additional need for more funding, and that project could apply to access the Section 108 funds.
Oh, cool. Awesome.
Hi, this is Mike from Habitat. I just wondered, does this impact at all what your other CDBG funds, your other CDBG fund availability for other local projects?
No, it does not. This is, this is, this is, this allows us to have a borrowing authority, Mike, for up to five times our annual CDBG allocation. We still get the annual CDBG application. The CDBG, statutorily, the CDBG guarantees these loans in the event of a default. And HUD, and again, there are underwriting standards and credit risk standards that you've got to compile by to minimize the risk of a default and to minimize the potential loss of your CDBG allocation. So again, let's say you're doing a revenue-generating project. That revenue-generating project has to demonstrate that revenues from that project can service to debt. In addition to that, HUD requires the pledging of another source. So you have sort of two different sources that have to be built into this so that you don't end up using your, or defaulting and having to use your CDBG. If it is a non-revenue project, like a community center, you've got to, that community center doesn't generate any income. So the debt service has to come from somewhere. So let's say you, the example that I always use, if you have a $10 million Section 108 loan for a community facility, the debt service on that would be $600,000. Well, a community facility doesn't, will not be able to generate $600,000 in debt. So that is the case where you pledge, you pledge $600,000 annually from your CDBG dollars to service that debt. Okay, in addition, in addition to that, where is a non-revenue generating project? In addition to that, the city must pledge another source as backup. It can be franchise fees. It can be utility taxes. It can be tax increment financing. HUD will not allow you to do a non-revenue generating project and pledge your CDBG as debt service without having a backup source. So there are built-in, built-in measures to minimize the risk that you will, you will lose your CDBG allocation. And remember now, before you can proceed, HUD must review every single one of these deals, and they are not going to provide that guarantee. That's why it's called a loan guarantee program. They will not provide that guarantee if they feel that the project, it does not demonstrate prudent risk or does not demonstrate the ability to pay back the loan or to service to debt or to provide backup sources to service to debt.
That makes sense. The leverage, the five-to-one leverage is strong.
Oh, it's just significant of what people are doing with this, with this program. Oh, it's, it's just significant of what people are doing with this, with this program.
Is it possible to do this on a, a more frequent basis? Could you do it every year and create that kind of a loan pool?
No, you've got to, you, 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 you've got a maximum loan pool of five times your annual CDBG allocation. So you've, you've got, you've got $37 million. You, you, if you burn through that 37 million dollars as these loans are paid back, you free up more, more authority. But you don't, you don't get to have $37 million annual. So if we were, if we, we, we launched this $37 million pool, let's say within one year, maybe we make two or three loans. But when we exhaust that authority, we've got to pay back some of that money before we can, we can go back to that $37 million cap.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
No questions in the queue.
Okay, so are there going to be opportunities, Monica, for written questions? Or is this the last opportunity that, that folks will have to comment on this? When does the public comment period end?
This is Benita Brown. The comment period ends on Monday, December 27.
Okay.
So they have up until then to provide written comments that can be either through the mail, US mail, or email.
Okay. And, and I just want to say, and it's, I was, I was listening to a webinar this weekend. There will, there will also be opportunity for public comment on every single loan that goes through the loan pool. HUD requires that. So like we're doing a, a hearing on the generic ability to set it up, we are also required, when we approve these, we're also required to take every single loan to public comment. So, so the, the, the community will have an opportunity to, to comment on these, these loans as they are approved and as we, before we submit them to HUD. Any other questions?
I just have one. I threw it in the chat, but is there any value in providing letters of support for this, for this funding?
Yes, I, I, if you would like to, that would be, that would be very helpful. I know we're going to reach out to some of our congressional delegation and ask them to, to provide us with, with letters of support. We've used this once before, 21 years ago for Jeep. It was for one project. What we want to do is to, to, to be able to use this to help in our, in our neighborhoods, to help with the work that we're doing, small as well as large businesses. And the, the beauty of a loan pool is that you can diversify your portfolio. Maybe you do three strong loans. And then you have some marginal loans perhaps that, that you really want to do in some of our, in some of our revitalization areas. So the goal is to, to try to have a diverse portfolio of loans and really use this tool to strategically help projects that would, would otherwise not be able to, to be funded and, and use this powerful tool. So if there are no other questions, I'm going to end this public hearing on the City of Toledo's substantial amendment to its 2020, 2024 CON Plan and 2021, 2020, 2022 Annual Action Plan to activate the Section 108 Loan Guarantee Program for the City of Toledo. We thank you for participating this evening and look forward to your further participation as we move forward with this program. Good night to everybody.